I'm going to call to order the Joint City Council and Housing Redevelopment Authority Work Session. It's October 17th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. And our first topic of business is to discuss opportunities to spend pooled tax increment within the community. I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez, or, oh, excuse me. We'll turn it over to Acting Executive Director Julie Urban. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Supple, members of the council and the HRA. Thank you for being here tonight. So we are here tonight to talk about how we want to spend our pooled tax increment. So earlier this year, the HRA hired Ellers, our financial consultants, to prepare a TIF management plan. They completed that plan, that plan, it's a detailed look at our different TIF districts. That plan has been completed and was accepted by the HRA back in September. So we're going to talk about that. What the plan identified was that there is a significant amount of pooled tax increment that's available to spend in the community, and we're going to talk about ways to do that, which is through three different tools that have a variety of limitations, requirements, timelines, that we're going to go through tonight. And then we're going to talk about proposed next steps. So first, the TIF management plan, and so this is a detailed look at the city's different TIF districts. It puts all the information into one document. The plan provides a review of TIF as a development tool. It talks about tax base impacts after districts are decertified, outstanding obligations, pooling, and a lot more. It also looks very specifically at all 13 of our active TIF districts. It assesses opportunities, challenges, and any compliance issues we might have with those districts. So back in September, Rebecca Kurtz of Ellers presented an overview of the entire report to the HRA. And I'm not going to go into the details on that plan. I would encourage you to watch a copy of that, or the video of that, that's available on our website, and that can sort of give you the background and more of the details on that plan. But I do want to highlight a few key points that are related to our discussion tonight about how to spend this pooled increment. So first of all, I think it's important to note that all our obligations will be met. We're in good shape, and the HRA is not in a position of risk in any of the districts. The second important thing I think that is important to note in the plan is that the overall impact on market value of properties within TIF districts is nearly a 400% increase. And it's actually more than 500% if you just look at our redevelopment districts, so those districts that we're removing blight from the community. The third point that we're going to, that I want to point out from the plan is that the plan identified a significant amount of pooled TIF, almost $10 million, that will be available in the coming years from three districts that are nearly ready to be decertified. So I'm going to pause here for a moment, just to reflect on this, just to point out and to emphasize that those areas in which we've invested, areas that we determined to be blighted, had an over 500% increase in market value. That's pretty exciting. And you add on top of that is that the HRA has almost $10 million from those same districts to invest in the community. This is really pretty amazing, and we're really excited to be able to put this plan forward for you to think about what we can do in our community with these funds. So, that's the plan. So there are three different options or tools for how we can spend this money. First of all, I'll talk about special legislation, and we've talked about this before. This was legislation that was passed back in 2021, that we got approval from the legislature along with St. Louis Park and Minnetaka, got similar legislation approved by the legislature. And this basically allows us to move pooled TIF, TIF that's pooled for housing purposes specifically, into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we can do that through 2026. Our pooled funds are collected in redevelopment districts, so what we had to do was to authorize, which we did back in May, authorize the collection of 10% from those districts for housing purposes. And so that 10% is now available for us to transfer into our trust fund. So there's no deadline for spending this money. We do have to report back to the legislature in 2024, and again, in 2026. It would be nice to have something to showcase in those reports, if possible, but it's not a requirement that we get it spent. So the second tool or option we have is what we're calling temporary legislation. This was also passed in 2021, and I think it was the league and maybe metro cities that pushed for this. It allows cities to spend unencumbered TIF balances that are collected through the end of this year, so the end of 2022. So it is intended to stimulate development as we exit the pandemic. So you can think about this as pandemic recovery money, perhaps. So this happens to be very flexible money. It allows us to spend pooled TIF on things that we normally couldn't, things like job creation, business loans, and on properties that wouldn't meet the blight test, which is something we normally have to do. The limitation on this money is that it has to be spent by the end of 2025. And then finally, our third option is the one we've always had, which is our regular pooling. And this is our Housing and Redevelopment Fund that the HRA manages. We talk about this quite a bit. In many of our redevelopment TIF districts, we are pooling at least some money into this fund now. All the districts retain 10% for admin, but several also contribute that additional 15% to the Housing and Redevelopment Fund. So I think you're also familiar with, we've talked about over the years, how there are some difficulties in spending this money because it is limited to being spent, excuse me, on blighted properties. So in the case of this, the limit on this money is also that the funds have to be spent before the district is decertified, otherwise that money goes back to Hennepin County. So that's kind of a lot, so we, Melissa put together a chart here to kind of summarize the different options, and so I'll just go in a little bit more detail, and it's kind of a, to reiterate what the options are. So with the temporary legislate, temporary legislation, or the pandemic recovery money, so in this case, we could do loans, interest rate subsidies, assistance in really kind of any form, as long as it consists of new construction or substantial rehabilitation, and if doing so will create or retain jobs. But that also includes construction jobs, so that test is really not too difficult to meet. So substantial apartment rehab is a possible option, development gap financing for a project that's not within a TIF district, economic development assistance is an option, for example, tenant build-outs, small business loans, maybe sustainability improvements, depending on the scope and the project itself. So we have a lot of flexibility here to spend on things that are not normally TIF-eligible. We could potentially help an affordable housing project out of this fund, and it might be our preferred way to help because the reporting requirements would be less onerous than, say, the special legislation would require. So the funds for this tool have to be collected before the end of this year, and we also have to adopt a spending plan by the end of the year, and we have to spend the money by the end of 2025. However, any money that we transfer here that we don't get spent, we can transfer back to a different place. So there's really kind of no downside, we feel, to transferring money into this fund. So the second option, again, is that special legislation that we got, to transfer money to our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So this is money very specific to affordable housing. So we could do, again, grants, loans, loan guarantees, a variety of options here. And we've already identified some projects that could be funded out of this pot. Ever since we had that approved last year, we've been thinking about how to spend it. So in fact, we have committed some of those monies to Richfield Flats. Back in June, the HRA committed $200,000 to Richfield Flats to do energy improvements and to help them leverage tax credits. So again, we can transfer money to this fund anytime before the end of 2026. And in this case, there's no deadline to spend. Once again, I said, we do have these reports due, and it might be nice to at least show we've got some activity for those reports. So this is also a good option for that later transfer. So if we get to the end of 2025 and we haven't spent money under the temporary legislation, money could be transferred here. So finally, the regular pooling, as you're more familiar with, and that's our Housing and Redevelopment Fund, plus our administrative monies, and typical TIF-eligible expenses that are necessary to redevelop properties, or what we could spend this money on, they have to meet that statutory requirement of being a blighted property, so we have to do what we call a substandard evaluation. So money available is available in this until the district is decertified, but the money then goes back to Hennepin County if we don't get it spent, which is what led us to request the special legislation. So the deadlines for this, two districts will be expiring at the end of 2025, and one district at the end of 2030. So I will point out, we have already budgeted and committed some money, or some of, some projects, we've committed some money for projects under this Housing and Redevelopment Fund, and things like Woodlawn Terrace, that money is coming out of here. The Lynnview, we gave additional money for them to maintain their commercial space. We do substandard property acquisition out of this fund, so. So then, next steps. What we, I think, is clear, that there is no one tool that's going to be able to spend all the funds that we have available. Given the time limits, the constraints for each tool, we're going to need to mix and match how we spend the money, depending on which tool we pick. So given that reality, we're recommending the following next steps. First, we recommend we transfer $750,000 to our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This amount would cover current obligations that we've made, plus adds a small cushion. So these obligations include the $200,000 committed to Richfield Flats. We also fund out of here acquisition rehab that we do through the land trust, so first time homebuyer programs. And then, the state of Minnesota is supposed to be putting forward some sort of a match application, or, I'm sorry, a grant application where they will match funds that we have in our fund, and so we wanted to put a little extra money in there, just to be ready for that application. The second thing we recommend we do is adopt a spending plan. And so this will be something that the HRA crafts and adopts, but then sends to the city council for a public hearing and final adoption. And we need to do this before the end of the year. Now, again, because this temporary legislation is the most flexible tool, we recommend that the spending plan cover the maximum amount of unencumbered TIF, minus that $750,000. And that will add up to about $6.4 million. So just a reminder, again, this, while this tool has the shortest timeframe to spend the money, if we get to that December 2025 deadline, we can always move the money back into a different bucket. So again, there doesn't seem to be a downside to creating the spending plan for the maximum amount of money here. And I would note that if we were to spend all of the money in this way, these two funds, there would still be about $3 to $3.4 million in regular pooled TIF that would still need to be spent in the next eight years, some by 2025 and some by 2030. And again, that's for using for blighted properties. So the third thing we recommend we do is that we prepare for spending the money in these two funds by crafting some priorities for the trust fund, and then also the spending plan language. This will help us to clearly articulate our priorities to developers, and just help us all to evaluate proposals that come before us. So just, I want to talk a little bit about what we have sort of started to put together for a spending plan, and what we decided to do was based in on the strategic plan. We want to point out, it does not need to be super detailed, and so we are proposing for it to be broad, again, so that we can have the most flexibility as possible. So the priorities, again, are based on our strategic plan that we adopted back in 2020, or, back in July. So the priorities in the strategic plan, as you may remember, include a vibrant downtown, an increased tax base, maintaining affordability, climate resilience. And then we just also would add any additional goals of the comp plan or other city plans, again, trying to be as broad as possible so that we can fit lots of different projects under there and get those funds spent. And then for our Housing Trust Fund, I think primarily what we want to do here is to look at proj, to fund projects that further the goals of our inclusionary housing policy. And so in that policy, we talk about larger bedroom sizes, deeper affordability and accessibility are all things that we push for. And then I think some additional things that we'd like to, we would consider, projects that are using it to leverage other funds, projects that are providing energy efficiency that improve affordability, housing with supportive services, and housing that would have resident subsidies attached to it. I also need to point out, Councilmember Whalen had asked this question about, well, can we, can we do rent assistance? And unfortunately, the special legislation specifically says we cannot do rent assistance, and we cannot do down payment assistance with the, any of these funds. So that's not an option, but we're hoping to get creative and find ways to provide funds that then maybe they can write down rents using other funds, or, so we're going to work on trying to be a little more creative, but unfortunately, we cannot do our own subsidies with this. So then finally, just, we want to be clear with developers, that this is really about money for projects that are going above and beyond the inclusionary housing policy and the housing TIF district requirements. So our inclusionary housing policy requires 20% of the units be affordable at 60% of the AMI, and a housing TIF district requires 20% affordable at 50% AMI. We would see these funds being used to go beyond that, to go deeper, to provide more larger units, to provide more accessible units, and to go beyond just what their minimum requirement is. So with that, what we're looking for tonight is just some feedback from you, you know, does the proposal for how we're going to manage those three tools make sense to you? And then if you have any feedback on those draft trust fund priorities and the spending plan guidelines? So if you want to start with questions, or I'll let you, Chair Supple, take it from here.
Sure. So do any of you have questions or feedback that you want to share? Okay, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
So just to clarify in the breakdown, again, it's $10 million total that is relevant for this discussion. You said $750,000 immediately goes into Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I'm assuming $250,000, if it were not spent, is something else, to be up to 10% of that $10 million later, or, you said the max that goes into the trust fund was 10%. Is that right?
It's 10% of the total TIF that's collected from all our districts.
Oh, okay, so it's not.
It's a big number.
It's not 1 million.
Yep.
It's much more than that, then.
Yeah, it's much more than that. So if we were to go, like, re-prioritize and decide, oh, no, we want to give as much as possible to the trust fund, I think it could be like 7 million. So we did look at that scenario, and then our consultant pointed out, well, why not just put it in the flexible money, and then whatever is left over can go in there, because you could still do affordable out of either pot. But yeah, no, it could be quite a bit more than that.
And then to clarify this, you said 6.6 or whatever go in this flex fund, what, and then 3.3 would remain for other, where did that breakdown come from?
So because it's what we can, what we have unencumbered until the end of this year.
Okay.
And so that's where the 6.4 comes from.
So it is sort of maxing out what is available to us would go into that.
We decided to max that. If we went the other direction and maxed out the trust fund first, and then did pooled TIF, I think we end up with a little less than a million available in that space. So it really depended on how you prioritized and.
Okay. And then what, one other question that's maybe a difficult answer in general terms, but like, how, how blighted does something have to be to be like a regular redevelopment TIF district? Like, I know, I can think of like the 101E66, I think those buildings were considered blighted, but like, does it, just for our idea of like, what should be used that we couldn't use normal pooled TIF for, like, and I know this is a question that can't be answered, but like, is the hub blighted? Like, I don't, what's, what is blight?
That is a good question. Whether we think the hub would qualify, I'm not sure. When it comes to single-family homes, we're looking for structural issues. There's cracked foundations, there's, it always, so there's a test that says that it has to cost more than 15% of the structure's value to correct and make current, with current codes. So you can usually get to that 15% because of the energy code in Richfield Properties, but the legislation or the courts have also said, there's got to be more than that. It has to be subs, really substandard. And so, so when it comes to those single-family homes, it really has to be more of a teardown, you know, I mean, we, we see just a whole variety of those. You know, the little rooms aren't enough on their own, but you know, there's one where the stairway was in the bathroom, or the, there's just functional issues, or it's just in such a poor condition, it would just take so much money. Firehouses qualify, or, you know, been damaged by fire. And far of the commercial properties, there's just, we have it evaluated by a firm that does this, and they look at a variety of different code issues to see. In the case of World of Fish, they were in there for 20 minutes and said, yeah, it's substandard. And then several thousand dollars later, we got our report that said, yep, it's substandard, that they could then testify in court with. So, I mean, it was accessibility, it was completely inaccessible for, you know, anybody, the electrical, it was running, you know, power cords everywhere, so it's, it's that kind of stuff.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I've still got opinions about the priorities, but I kind of want to let other people get their questions in first.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you. If you could say, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, so the, the restrictions against rental assistance, down payment assistance, that's not just like emergency rental assistance, like what we've done for VEEP, that is like creating subsidized units?
Yep. There's, I think that's where it came from. It came from the Senate version, and I think they were, they were saying, oh, we've already spent a bunch of money on rent assistance, why would you do that? So I sensed they weren't getting the, the point of, there's just not enough subsidies around, but it's what we're left with. They listed very specifically what you could do. What we had asked for was allow us to do what a, a trust fund can do, which is rent assistance, which is down payment assistance, but they very specifically wanted more hard costs.
Okay.
Yep.
But what you're saying, we could do, which I think is maybe similar to what we've done with Richfield Flats, is that we can address some of the other upfront funding gaps that would otherwise have required them to have higher rents in order to cover their costs?
Yep, that's one option. The other, we're working with Beacon, they will likely be coming in for a request from the trust fund. That's a case where they're proposing to build on a vacant piece of land, so there's nothing substandard, right? And it's just kind of a small project to spend all the money and time and effort to create a TIF district specific to that, and when you're all affordable, you don't. It doesn't generate much TIF. So what they are looking at doing, and we haven't seen the numbers yet, is taking assistance from us, and then they will capitalize it over a certain number of years, and so basically use it to write down rents. And so it won't be specific to a person's income. I mean, that's the beauty of the subsidy, right? That your, what you pay for rent varies depending on your income, but, but they could look at someone who's on, say, SSDI, and then base the rents, you know, at that kind of level. So, so we'll see. So that's my hope, that they have a person working for them that's working on this, and then we'll get together with our folks at Ellers and, and see if we can come up with some options. But they can't, it can't be a subsidy like what we're used to.
Thank you for clarifying. I think we have quite a bit of time for discussion, but I'll just say, in general, I agree with kind of the, the way, the proposed way to prioritize between the three different buckets. I think, I'm curious what HRA members think who weren't in the strategic planning process, but as someone who helped create it, I'm like, yeah, this sounds great. The one minor comment I would make, looking at the spending plan, bullet points versus the trust fund priorities, just that, and I don't know if this is verbatim what we're considering putting on our plan, but maintain affordability, to me, says something different than I think the original language was, maintain Richfield as an affordable place to live. And just knowing that deeper affordability, as it specifically says in the trust fund priorities, that that's something we've talked about a lot, I'd hate to preclude that from our spending plan.
And I think this is more for the function of a.
A PowerPoint.
PowerPoint.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Reducing. I mean, I think we do understand the depth of, it's not just maintain, right, it's as an affordable, because it's creating new units, right? Yep. Yep, thank you, though I'll make sure that's clear.
Do we have any feedback? Okay, Commissioner Hanson?
Well, I guess being fairly newer to the process, I, I would agree with Councilmember Whalen, that the plan looks reasonable, looks good to me overall, is what would be my initial assessment. I like the flexibility of the flex plan, just because of flexibility, of course. I was looking at that deadline of like, by the end of the year 2022, and since, of course, we are in kind of like the waning phase of this year 2022, is it reasonable to expect that that can be all put together in time to meet that deadline?
Yeah, so I would, we'll have to bring to the HRA in, in November, that plan. I mean, we've looked at other cities and they're one page. I mean, they're, they're like that.
They are pretty.
They're that simple. Yep, so we'll have to do that, and then we'll, we'd schedule a public hearing before the council in December, and it's a 10-day notice in the, you know, just like a normal public hearing would be. So yep, we definitely can get that plan adopted, and then, yeah, we have to, I mean, getting it spent by 2025 could be challenging, but we'll do our best, so.
Any other questions? I have some comments, but I'll hold them till the end. Did you have any other?
I have some follow-ups.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna, to clarify process, I'm assuming it would be the HRA's role to then, we create the big spending plan that we both weigh in on, but HRA would likely be the ones approving individual expenditures that are part of the plan?
Yes, that's, yep, most likely. They're sort of the administrator of both those things.
All right, other questions or comments? Go ahead, Council, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just, I don't know that I said it clearly, I do like the breakdown, the initial breakdown. In terms of the spending plan, I'm still having like a little bit of trouble picturing like literally what projects we can fund out of this, and I think that'll come through more details, but to the extent that it can make like a cohesive difference in the, in the downtown area, I think that's important. I would love it if it was like, hey, Hub, we have $5 million to, to get the ball rolling. I don't know that that's going to make a difference, understanding where that is at. But if there are things like facade improvement grants for the other strip malls around that area, things that would make, because right now it just feels so much like it's sort of the wrong side of the tracks, when you, when you cross the railroad tracks, and it's just such a difference in the attention and care we put west of Lyndale, but those are huge projects that we can't, you know, hope to touch, even if we spent the whole $6 million on it. So to the extent we can make a broad difference with multiple small projects in that area, that seems like something we can't achieve through the normal TIF process, and it seems like a one-time opportunity to foster future investment in the area. And I would hope meet that test, which is construction associated with such improvements.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? I'll weigh in at this point, then. I think the plan that you have, as far as which buckets to take it from and to keep the flexibility, is a good one. And so I like the fact that we've thought through all of that, and I think it was a good use of funds to ask Ellers to come up with a, a plan. And I'm fine with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund priorities. As far as the spending plan, I want to be clear that I'm understanding correctly. In our strategic plan, when it talks about vibrant downtown, it talks about both housing and economic development, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so when you're talking about maintaining affordability, that can also talk about affordability of commercial space, because that has been an issue. When we redevelop, suddenly, the people that had been doing business in that area can't afford to be there, and we don't want to be pushing out our small businesses because there's not affordable commercial space. So I'm wondering, can this be used for creative ways to help address that, as well as the affordable housing issues?
I think that's our hope. As you know, the HRA, or the EDA, is funding a new position, or a, a fourth manager in community development that will be more economic development focused, and our hope is to get that person on board. You know, this winter, we're currently doing, having someone do an assessment of what are our opportunities and options, what kinds of programs do other cities do, things like that, hopefully exploring those things. And I'm trying to think, there is some, somebody or some project that has done just what you're talking about, figured out a way to write down rents for a certain amount of time, and so that's something that we're working on and exploring, and so this would just, you know, hopefully provide some money for what we identify in, in that process, and with this new person.
Okay, so that would be helpful, because I think we need to make sure we have balance, because both are very important goals, and I want to make sure that we don't just assume it's for one thing, when it could be for a multitude of things.
Yep.
And I know there've been, like, the person that came to the open forum that talked about a global market, there have been people talking about maker spaces, there have been people talking about entrepreneurial incubators. So just so we're thinking of a, a great deal of like possibilities there as well, and, you know, I think, I do agree. And, you know, I think, I do agree with the goals for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and that we need to work on the housing affordability and those things. And one of the things that I think about when I see that is also the climate resilience. Because if it's new construction, it's easier to put in things like the geothermal and some of that kind of stuff that, so you don't have that reliance on fossil fuels. But I'm wondering if there are ways that we can help people as far as how they can do a conversion over, or, or ways of, you know, our current housing stock to make it more climate resilient. And I don't have the answers, but I wanted to just make sure that that was part of the consideration as we're going through it. All right, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I think that's very much a goal. That's where we are hesitant a little bit with that, those words, substantial rehabilitation. And what, what, what does that mean? And I think we need to flesh that out a little bit, to find out if doing some of those kinds of energy efficiency things, at what level do we have to do them in order for it to count? So that's just, I think, why she said, you know, we hope to be able to do some of those things. But, but certainly on a new project, it'd be easy to, to provide stuff, you're right. But the harder part is the existing structures. But we can certainly, we'll certainly take a look at it, but we can't promise.
All right, Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you. Are you, and what you were just saying, was that thinking of like, I mean, I know we already have some of the like Home Energy Squad and like those kinds of things. Would the, the spending plan have as much flexibility to do some of the, like, energy efficiency upgrades just for single-family homes? Or is that what you're saying is unclear?
It has to be either new construction or substantial rehab. So I, you know, where I could see it happening is if, say, we found an apartment building, apartment owner who really was interested in doing major work, but we're probably talking $30,000 to $50,000 per unit to qualify as substantial rehab. And then maybe as part of that, it's like, well, we'll give you money for that as long as you also do these energy things. I could see kind of pairing that. Now whether we will find that perfect building in time will be the challenge.
Do, well, two different thoughts. One, I think, well, a few different. With what you just said, I remember at the very beginning you were talking about like substantial apartment rehab could be a possibility. And I know that that's kind of one of the ongoing questions, is how for our naturally occurring affordable housing, how do we keep those costs down? Will also maintain, like fixing back up these properties that are 60, 70 years old, some of them? And I, again, I think the HRA EDAs had a lot more of these conversations, but my understanding is that the apartment rehab programs we have now don't get utilized as much as we had hoped. Is there, do you think there is a demand, an opportunity to use some of these funds that way? Or is that just not been something property owners have been interested in?
I, I think what it will take is us identifying someone, probably. I don't expect them to call me. I think we're going to have to go out and, and look. And we're going to have to talk as a staff, what is our capacity? You know, we're hoping to have this staff person who could, could do some work on these economic development pieces. And then we're working on these affordable, I mean, Beacon and MICC, I think both will want money from this. And Beacon substantial money from this. Those other, other pieces, you know, will take our, I think, a little more legwork and a lot more, yeah, more of our time. And we'll have to see what, what we can, what we can do. So it's certainly something I would like to see happen. I mean, the other piece we'd like to see is there a way to figure out, how can we get an elevator in an existing building? And is there someone out there who'd be willing to experiment with us? And so, but it'll take a lot of phone calling and meetings. And, you know, it's just stuff that's a little going to be more intensive. So we'll have to figure out what, you know, it's a balanced act, right? To figure out what we can get done in three years, so.
Okay. And I, my final comments, I agree with what Sean had said, that I think there's a lot, if not all or most of these goals, that could be met in some of what we've heard at the hub. And obviously, a development of that size, they could eat up 6.5 million pretty quickly. And so I, I think if that were to move forward, that kind of answers the question. But I guess my, my other thought that I think you just answered was, if that's not the case, if we are kind of looking for ways to, like we, ways to meet these goals, and we don't have the people lining up to, to partner with us, could we be more proactive? And I, what I hear you saying is that that is based on staff time largely, which I know lately has been very stretched. Is it, knock on wood, barring any other disruptions, do you think a year from now that the department would be back to full staff? Or is that hard to guess?
We'll see. I mean, getting that economic development person is a key piece. We're struggling with our accountant position. Well, does that, does that affect this work as much? Well, maybe indirectly, but, because it takes Melissa's time and energy to figure that piece out. But, so it's hard, hard to say. But, I mean, I think that we feel, we feel really good about the new people we have. And within a year, our planner is going to be totally up to speed and really, you know? So, so I, I mean, our hope is to be able to do, do more, but, but we might find it's easier to, you know, go, we may have to go for, opt for the things that are less staff-intensive, but maybe not quite as creative as we'd like to be.
All right, are there additional feedback, questions, comments? All right, Commissioner Hanson?
Well, just one follow-up to the spending plan. Is there any chance that the funds could be used to, for something on the Penn Avenue corridor? I know sometimes some people feel that's kind of an overlooked area. Maybe potentially for jump-starting some project on like the old bumper-to-bumper site?
Yep, I think the bumper-to-bumper will have some other options with tax increment. But yep, I mean, that certainly could be. I mean, it's not downtown, so it's not that priority. But increase in tax base, it certainly falls under that. And I think we all in the community supports us doing stuff over there. So, so yep, I think we certainly could find a partner over there, somebody who wants to do some stuff. And yep, definitely an option.
As a follow-up to that, that would apply also along the eastern part of 66th Street as well, the tax base part of this?
Yep, definitely.
All right, additional questions, follow-up? All right, do you have what you need?
Yes, I think so. I mean, I'm hearing that you guys are on board with what we're talking about. And yeah, we'll bring something more concrete to the HRA in November, and then look for that from the council in December. Yeah, and I would expect, you know, something coming from Beacon, for example, yet this fall too, if not January. So we'll have some real stuff coming out of this money.
All right, well, thank you so much to staff. And also thank you for taking the time to get the consultants in to give us some, do the research for us, and we really appreciate all the work that your department has done.
Thank you.
All right, so I believe we stand adjourned. Thank you.